Yeah. Let's bring to order the Queen Anne's County Planning Commission for Thursday, June 12, 2025. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Other comments? There being none, you don't have anything. Update. Legislation and legal matters, Amy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Amy Murdaugh, Planning Director. Just a few things to update you. The Commissioners have been very busy. Their meeting this week had a lot of items in addition to approving the budget for this next fiscal year. After several public meetings and public hearings and delays, the Commissioners did ultimately approve amendments to the Water and Sewer Plan to add Aspire and Barnstable to the service area. This isn't an approval of the project. It just allows the Barnstable and Aspire projects to proceed through the process. So you will now be seeing those projects again for review. They both received a concept approval months ago, so they made that decision. They also updated the impact fees for fiscal year '26. Since COVID, they've kept that rate flat because construction costs and the cost of inflation was extremely high. But in the, in recent years, those rates have, the inflation rates have come back to a more normalized rate. So they did agree for the first time since COVID to go ahead and increase those impact fees. The way their impact fee code is written, it's that the fee automatically keeps up with the cost of inflation. So if the Commissioners take no action, that inflationary increase takes place, so that's what they chose to do, and that increases 2.4% of construction cost this year. Additionally...
What was it in the past?
It's usually around that percentage. It's usually anywhere from 2% to 3, you know, 3.5%. On the memo, which I don't have in front of me, but on the memo that goes to the Commissioners every year, we keep a running tally of those averages for the last 10 years so that everyone can see, you know, where we are as a snapshot in time. So if anyone wants to go and take a look at that on the last Commissioner's agenda and their action items, under the County Administrator's Action Item List, that staff report is there. And on page two of that staff report, there's a chart that indicates the historic rates.
Do you know, on average, how much it is now? Or how much it's going to be? Just the average?
Well, it's, it's different. It's established at a different rate for, yeah, for school, fire, and parks and recreation. So...
I'm just saying, you built 500 homes, you generated X number of dollars. That X number of dollars divided by 500 yields an average rate.
Right. No, I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, sorry. That's fine.
Yeah. Because it's also, it's different from commercial to residential, and so...
Bill.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I don't have that, I don't have that math available in my brain.
Is it 10,000 or is it 20,000? One, which is it?
And also, just to let you know, the Senate Bill 931, which is the solar bill, was passed. There was an effort to take the matter to referendum. That, we were kind of waiting to see where that landed. That initiative wasn't successful, so we now had, and we would have needed to proceed with emergency legislation regardless, because the new solar provisions become effective on July 1, which doesn't give any local jurisdiction time enough to update their codes. But we are legally required, exactly in the same way that the cannabis provisions went into effect, we are required to update our zoning codes to come in line with Senate Bill 931. So we're working on that diligently. It will be placed as emergency legislation on the Commissioners' June 24th agenda. Because of the holiday next week, we have to get that in very early. We don't have a draft, so I don't have any sneak peek to share with you right now as to what that's going to look like. But you will be seeing it at your next meeting as a piece of emergency legislation.
Holiday next week, is that Juneteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and we do have two applications right now in the queue waiting for our updated code, so. And one of them is a community solar, and one of them is a utility-scale solar.
Okay. Is that the end of legislation and legal?
That is the end of legislation and legal.
And now we're up for staff?
So the one thing before, Stephanie has some legislation, sorry.
Yeah, I have a few legislation. So the citizen-sponsored tax amendments that you did hear the last two months, they did go to the Commissioners. I wanted to update you that 2505, which was the amendment that was to allow indoor shooting ranges in the TC, that applicant withdrew their application prior to the Commissioners' public hearing on this past Tuesday. And then the Commissioners held public hearings for the three other citizen-sponsored tax amendments. And then also, this past Tuesday, the Commissioners passed 2501, which was the update to the cannabis regulations, and they will take effect July 26. So those are some county legislation updates.
They had a very busy meeting on the 10th of June. And from a staff, for a staff update, I want to welcome Mary Ellen Gray aboard. She's our new senior planner on our long-range planning team.
Welcome aboard. Can you, can you give us a little dog and pony show?
First of all, I'm so thrilled to be here, and everyone's been very welcoming, and I'm just, just very excited and honored to be here and work, working as a senior planner here in Queen Anne's County. So most of my experience has been in Delaware. So geez, I'm working there as a planner in various levels, as planning in various jurisdictions there, and in Kent County, in Newark, City of Newark. My latest responsibility, latest job experience has been in the city of Rehoboth. Previous to that, I worked also in the state of Indiana, doing some planning at the city, city level, and also at the state level, too. So I've been 20, when you count up the years, it's kind of scary, but let's say, say 20-plus years in doing planning.
Welcome aboard.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ellen.
Okay. Is that it?
I think that's everything.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, Roosburg Roads.
You missed the annual report. Do you want to go back to that one?
I'm sorry?
It's under the miscellaneous staff items.
Presentation of the annual report.
Oh, okay.
She said she was dumb, but she lied.
I'll make it quick.
Okay.
All right, so the item before you is the 2024 annual report. This is the report that is required to MDP every year. It is a standard form that we generally go through. I'd like to thank Doug for his support on all the crunching of the numbers. So basically...
Actually, what we have before us is the Roosburg Road.
Well, I didn't, I didn't want to bring it up because it's about 20-some pages long, unless you want me to bring it up, I will. If you have questions on anything specific, I can bring it up. I will give you some highlights, though, just of items that came from the, that report.
Okay.
So there was a total of 212 residential units that were constructed within the 2024 timeline. 173 were located in the PFA, and then 39 were outside of the PFA. But of those 173, 120 of those units were age-restricted dwelling units, so just as an interesting fact, I think.
I appreciate it, yeah.
So of the 173 units that were located in the PFA, 120 were located in an age-restricted community, so, because it gives an idea, I think, of what's, what's going on. In regards to commercial, there was an increase in the number of site plans that were approved from, from 2023 to 2024. In '23, there was four approved, and then in '24, there was six approved. So along with that, we have increased the number of building permits have increased for commercial use, so that's a kind of an interesting fact, I think, as well. So basically, this also includes our prioritization of strategies from our comp plan that we do every year. When we adopted the comp plan in 2022, it included a, basically in our implementation section, that we had to address the strategies every year and kind of indicate to the community where we are with those strategies, basically prioritizing them. So we did complete that. That's included in your packet. Like I said, that's an annual review. We sat down with all the, basically the, all those that were involved with the comp plan attended that meeting to give us kind of an indication of where we are with the comp plan. So I think it's a good annual meeting, so we know it's not just set on the shelf and kind of gives us a reminder, I think. So for this, I need basically you to indicate that you want us to send it to MDP and then to file it with the County Commissioners, unless you have questions as well.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we ask the planning staff to send the report to Maryland Department of Planning.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. All right, I'm done now. Thank you.
Now, we're at the Roosburg Road Solar LLC. Mr. Johnson?
Good morning. I'm Steve Johnson, Senior Planner with Planning and Zoning. We're here to discuss Project SP 24-12-0143 for Roosburg Road Solar 1 LLC, who is proposing to construct a 5-megawatt AC utility-scale solar array and is requesting concept plan approval in favorable recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Site's located in the central portion of Queen Anne's County, just east of where we are standing or sitting right now, on the other side of Route 301, just past Safety Drive. In 2017, Queen Anne's County created the Utility Scale Solar Array Overlay District. This is in an area of two miles on either side of the 69 kV power transmission lines that run through the county. All solar arrays that sell to off-site customers, including smaller community-scale projects such as this one, are defined as utility scale by code and must fall within this district. As you can see by the star on the screen, this site does fall within that district as required. Tax map 45, parcel nine, totals 88.89 acres, and is located off of Roosburg Road just past Safety Drive. The total LOD in lease area shown here in dash black is 29.56 acres. Property zone agricultural. Solar arrays are conditional uses in the agricultural zoning district. There are no natural resources within the project lease area. It is partially located within the Sensitive Species Project Review Area, and the applicant has provided correspondence from Department of Natural Resources, which indicated the site does fall within the headwaters of Three Bridges Branch, which is known to support a population of the state and federally listed dwarf wedge mussel. Therefore, this project will adhere to protection measures for aquatic habitats provided by DNR, and there is a condition at the end of the staff report regarding this requirement. There are FIDS habitat within the wooded areas according to DNR. The applicant has proposed no disturbance to the woodlands on the property and will place 5.91 acres of the existing woodlands shown there in dashed white at the top right of your screen into long-term protection. Again, this is a 5-megawatt system. Access is taken there off of Roosburg Road, shown circled in yellow at the bottom of your screen. The system will consist of 11,988 modules and 20 inverters. All wiring associated with this array will be below grade to the point of interconnection, shown there circled in red at the front of the property. The applicant is proposing 3.54 acres of impervious and no floor area. The stormwater has been reviewed and approved by DPW and consists of disconnection sheet flow and vegetation throughout the site. While no permanent water and sewer are required on-site, any on-site work exceeding two hours will require portable toilet and handwashing facilities, according to the Environmental Health Office. There's also a condition at the end of this staff report regarding this requirement. Noise will be less than 60 decibels, as required at the property lines. No lighting is proposed, and no topsoil will be removed from the site. The required 50-foot landscape buffer has been provided, shown in green on your screen. The existing woodland at the rear of the site will be utilized to screen the back. The planted buffer will include canopy trees, understory trees, evergreen shrubs, and pollinator-friendly herbaceous layer. These plantings are proposed to be watered via well and on-site drip irrigation. The maximum height of the panels is nine and a half feet. They're shown on the left of your screen at the top. All other equipment on-site and the required black vinyl coated fence is eight feet or less. And finally, all construction deliveries will be made via Route 3, US 301 and Roosburg Road. And before I turn it over to the applicant, I want to thank Mr. Reese. It's been nice working with you, and I wish you the best. I didn't think I'd get a chance to say that after this, so...
Thank you, sir.
Yep. So, any questions, I'll try to answer them or turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you for having us. My name is Drew Funk. I'm the project developer for this project with New Leaf Energy.
Got Ben Klemmer, Armed Group, and Civil Engineering Consultant.
I'll take any questions that you, that you have.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
This question actually involves staff as well, and please, as the applicant, don't get uneasy about it. House Bill 931 allocates 5% of our farmland to solar arrays, and I want to be sure that this farmland, which is being converted to a solar array in this project, is captured as part of that 5%. This being a concept plan, in my quick brief with staff this morning, indicated that the way the approval process will work, that this will be captured by that House Bill 931 and should not in no way delay or unhinge your project. But I was just curious if staff would comment on how this is going to play out. Thank you.
Got something, Amy?
Yep, so regardless of the timing of this project, or our previous projects or projects to come, the way Senate Bill 931 is written, despite some creative interpretations that I've heard recently, the way that bill is written is that that 5% includes acreage within a county's adopted priority preservation area. So that percentage includes the total project number, which would predate July 1 and move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Amy, does that mean that all the solar farms that are currently in place, do they count towards our 5%?
Yes, we have almost 1,100 acres of existing solar projects that are approved and/or already operating, and that acreage is, would be included in that percentage calculation of our priority preservation area, as long as all of those projects are within the priority preservation area, and I believe they are.
How much does that allow for gross number?
I don't have that number in front of me, but 5% of our priority preservation area totals almost 6,000 acres.
Well, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, can I get a recommendation?
Madam Chair, are you going to ask for public comment?
Oh, yes, public comment. And the paper, we only have one correct on the paper?
Yeah, I signed up on, before the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jay Falstad, Queen Anne's Conservation Association. The staff report is very thorough, and because the project lies within the overlay and is consistent with the comprehensive plan, we, we support this type of solar project. However, I do have some questions and comments, which I hope the Planning Commission will ask the applicant and consider before granting final approval. There are some nearby neighbors that could be directly impacted, and the driveway just to the west of the entry point, those neighbors have farm animals that I'm aware of. I've talked with them. Noise due to infrastructure installation is a concern. Attention should be given to permissible hours of operation, at least for the installation part, and we urge the applicant to begin the buffer planting at the earliest opportunity in order to mitigate surrounding impact. The staff report indicates that the applicant will be placing a portion of the woodland area into a conservation easement, but the report does not indicate who the easement holder will be or how that easement will be enforced. And so most easement holders in this area are either the Maryland Environmental Trust, ESLC, Chesapeake Wildlife Heritage, or some other organization. I think it would be important to at least try and identify who that easement holder will be and how the easement will be enforced. We very much support the buffer and just urge that native species trees and shrubbery are used in order to support native species insects, birds, mammals, et cetera. And we're happy to see that the soils are kept mostly in place and that no topsoil will be removed. This is very important, especially if the land is to be ever returned to agriculture. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? You have anything on Zoom? Okay. Can I get a, do you have, do you want to address the questions?
Yeah, we can, we can try to run through some of those. So first off, regarding noise, both during operation of the facility and during construction, we're meeting all county and co-mart requirements for that as far as maximum permissible noise at the property line. I believe, I'll have to double-check the sequence of construction, but I believe the installation of trees and buffer goes in just after the fencing, and the fencing's one of the first things to be installed on the project. Developers always like to have that to protect the equipment. So typically, it'll be anything necessary for ENS, then you have your site access, and then you'll have your fencing. And like I said, I would have to double-check the plants, but I think the trees and the buffer planting's going around that time. As far as the buffer itself, so it's 50 feet wide to meet county requirements, and I'll also note that that is 15 feet wider than the maximum that is currently proposed in SB 931, and it has been prepared by a professional landscape architect. And for native species and within that buffer planting on the ground in and around the shrubs and trees is a pollinator-friendly meadow mix, and the entirety of the site actually will be pollinator-friendly meadow mix, mowed a couple times a year.
Thanks for leaving me at least one.
That 15, that 15 feet is, it's just part of Queen Anne's County. We make it 50 feet?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Right.
Regarding removal of topsoil, we don't anticipate any significant grading on this site whatsoever, and even still, it is our practice to keep all topsoil on-site for future decommission.
And what about the easement?
That, I wasn't, I wasn't too sure about that.
I can, I can address that. The easement's held by the County Commissioners.
Okay. All right.
If I may, Madam Chair, Mr. Falstad, do we have any, you have any knowledge of what type of animals? We've had, we've heard testimony on previous applications with respect to horses and the impacts that construction and glare and things had. Do we know what animals you're, to who?
I don't know. I know that they have a small farm there, and there are farm animals. I don't know if it, I just don't know. I know that they've got pigs, but I don't, I, I feel like somebody had said at some point there were horses there, but I don't have, I don't have it, and they're not here, so I'm not raising that as any kind of objection, just wanted you all to be aware of it.
I think the last one that I was referring to, right, there was a running track nearby, further on, it was up by Price.
That's nowhere near this place, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, but I'm saying that we held that discussion, that that was a concern that this panel had because it was a, more of a horse facility rather than a small farm that may have some animals.
In that case, that you're talking about, Commissioner Lee, there were four horse farms nearby, one directly across the road, and there was a horse boarding facility, I think. There was a substantial more, substantially greater impact on that area than I think this one has. I just, not raising it to raise objection, I just wanted you all to be aware of it, that's all.
And we appreciate that, and we'll, I had reached out to all the budding neighbors through mail, and I'll, I'll reach out to that landowner as well, as hopefully coordinate something.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Oh, I'm abstaining. I don't know if you heard me or not.
Oh, I did not hear that. You're abstaining. Okay. Can I get a recommendation from you for your last one?
I have a question for Council, please. Can we get some clarity on that abstention? We've had discussions about that in the past.
Yeah, so is there a...
And like I said, I would have to double check the plants, but I think the trees and the buffer planting is going around that time. As far as the buffer itself, so it's 50 feet wide to meet county requirements. And I'll also note that that is 15 feet wider than the maximum that is currently proposed in SB 931. And it has been prepared by a professional landscape architect. And for native species and within that buffer planting on the ground in and around the shrubs and trees is a pollinator-friendly meadow mix, and the entirety of the site actually will be pollinator-friendly meadow mix, mowed a couple times a year.
Thanks for leaving me at least one.
That 15, that 15 feet is, it's just part of Queen Anne's County. We make it 50 feet?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Right.
Regarding removal of topsoil, we don't anticipate any significant grading on this site whatsoever. And even still, it is our practice to keep all topsoil on-site for future decommissioning.
And what about the easement?
That, I wasn't, I wasn't too sure.
I can, I can address that. The easement is held by the county commissioners.
Okay. All right.
If I may, Madam Chair, Mr. Falstad, do we have any, you have any knowledge of what type of animals? We've had, we've heard testimony on previous applications with respect to horses and the impacts that construction and glare and things had. Do we know what animals you're, to who?
I, I don't know. I know that they have a small farm there and there are farm animals. I don't know if it, I just don't know. I know that they've got pigs, but I don't... I feel like somebody had said at some point there were horses there, but I don't have, I don't have it. And they're not here, so I'm not raising that as any kind of objection, just wanted you all to be aware of it.
A running track nearby further on, it was up by Price.
That's nowhere near this place, yeah.
No, 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 but I'm saying that we held that discussion, that that was a concern that this panel had because it was a more of a horse facility rather than a small farm that may have some animals.
In that case that you're talking about, Commissioner Lee, there were four horse farms nearby, one directly across the road. And there was a horse boarding facility, I think. There was a substantial more, substantially greater impact on that area than I think this one has. I just, not raising it to raise objection, I just wanted you all to be aware of it, that's all.
And we appreciate that. And we'll, I had reached out to all the budding neighbors through mail, and I'll, I'll reach out to that landowner as well, as hopefully coordinate something.
Okay. Any other questions? May I get a recommendation?
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Oh, I'm abstaining. I don't know if you heard me or not.
Oh, I did not hear that. You're abstaining. Okay. Can I get a recommendation from you for your last one?
I have a question for council, please. Can we get some clarity on that abstention? We've had discussions about that in the past.
Yeah, so is there a financial or personal reason that you feel you can't be impartial in this that would cause you to abstain?
Yes. I was advised by my attorney not to involve myself in discussions regarding solar, even though I really want to.
Is there a reason that you shouldn't participate or shouldn't have participated in this discussion? That, that you will receive some type of...
I'm sorry, I'm not sure that that's an item for discussion.
I just want to make sure it's appropriate that you sit here, that you're not, there's no impact on...
I can leave. I don't have a problem leaving if that makes you feel better.
Sure.
Okay. I can do that.
Thank you.
We'll call you, we'll call you back.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Now, can I get a recommendation from the commissioners?
Madam Chair, resolved that the planning commission, regarding the request by Ruthsburg Road Solar LLC for concept plan approval to construct a 5-milwatt AC unit scale solar array on a 29.56-acre lease area within an 88.89-acre parcel in the agricultural zoning district, and as more particularly described in the Planning and Zoning File SP 24-120143 hereby finds, the concept plan is consistent with the intent and goals and objectives of the Queen Anne County zoning and plan and subdivision regulations and the 2022 Comprehensive Plan. The concept plan is consistent with the purpose of the utility solar array as described in a staff report dated June 12th, SP 24-12-0143, and hereby grants concept plan approval, subject to the following conditions. If by the time of construction, the panels proposed have changed from that provided on the plans, updated information must be submitted. Applicant must notify planning and zoning when ownership of the solar array changes, and the signage containing emergency contact information must be kept current. Prior to final site plan signature, provide the finalized forest conservation plan and executed long-term protection documents for recordation. Prior to the final site plan signature, provide an automatically renewable decommissioning bond that is enforceable by the county. Prior to final site plan signature, provide an automatically renewal land cape surety and maintenance agreement. Provide documentation that the connection to the public utility is approved. Provide finalized decommissioning plan that addresses all of the requirements provided in 18195.S parentheses five, parentheses E. Per the Department of Environmental Health, until the project is decommissioned, any owner, operator, or subcontractor performing work on the solar array that lasts for a duration exceeding two consecutive hours shall provide portable hand sanitizing and toilet facilities. These facilities shall be provided on-site for the duration of the work performed and shall be utilized by all workers and/or on-site visitors during that time. The facility shall be regularly serviced, monthly minimum, and all waste shall be disposed of properly off-site in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. The project will adhere to protection measures for aquatic habitats that have been provided by the Maryland Department of National Resources. As a condition of the permit approval, the applicant must adhere to the watering requirements as outlined in the approved landscape plan. And any outstanding comments stemming from agency reviews are addressed during the Board of Appeals' submittal. Recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Do we vote on these separately or together?
I would vote on them separately.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kathy?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Ayes have it. All right, recommendation to the Board of Appeals?
Recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Resolved that the planning commission, regarding the request by Ruthsburg Road Solar 1 LLC for concept plan approval to construct a 5-milwatt AC utility scale array, solar array on a 29.56-acre lease area within an 88.89-acre parcel in the agricultural zoning district, and as more particularly described in Planning and Zoning File SP 24120143, hereby forwards a favorable recommendation to the Board of Appeals under Section 18114C25, 181-38.1, and 181-95. S.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you, everyone.
Guys, want to take a break or you want to keep going? We'll take a five-minute break. We're back in. Planning Commission-sponsored text amendment, Stephanie.
Yep. So like I, like you said, this is a planning commission-sponsored text amendment, County Ordinance 2508, to the cluster subdivision buffer yard standards. So last month, you did have a draft of this before you. We did have some discussions. But in the end, you did request that it to be drafted as an ordinance. So the intent is to repeal the existing cluster subdivision buffer yard standards in their entirety, and then to replace them with items that we did discuss. But also, it's still to address the same intent of that cluster subdivision buffer yard. So right now, that buffer yard is required a 30-foot width in vegetation to be placed around all cluster subdivisions outside of the growth area. And then, there's no intent to change that requirement. That's just what the buffer yard is. But the items that will be addressed and which the planning commission did request to have changed, one is to remove the modification allowance. So basically, now the code allows for an applicant to come in and modify what would have been that existing cluster buffer yard around the subdivision. Some applicants have come in and asked for the entirety of it to be removed. So basically, because of the multiple applications I think you've seen before you, you've requested that modification standard be removed, in which it has. Also, another item you asked to be addressed was the time in which that buffer yard was to be constructed. We did, basically, it indicates that, that it will be required upon the first permit, which essentially would be a grading permit. So that's when they'd be required to implement that buffer yard. Currently, policy standards say that it's with the last dwelling that's constructed. So that would be the, the change there. Some specific changes, the landscaping standards have been made more specific. They are consistent with our current solar regulations. And then you did, as of last month, when we discussed this, ask that we add the specific standards from the ANSI requirements, which does come from our solar, basically allowing for the appropriate spacing between the vegetation. And then also, you asked that there be a specific number of shrubs per every 100 feet, and we have added that as well. So unless you have some questions, those are, you know, the ultimate changes to it. It still will be required outside of the, the growth area. It will be only for major subdivisions. Currently, it's for minor and major. But due to the way that subdivisions are developed, it's more appropriate for a major subdivision as opposed to a minor. So unless you have any questions?
I have one.
Okay.
Are you saying, just to clarify, they don't, once the first lot's sold, they don't have to build the screening around the entire project just along that lot that was sold?
So it would be required at the time of the first granting of the, the first permit. So essentially, when a major subdivision comes in, their first permit is usually a grading permit for roads and infrastructure. So it would be required at that time. So it would end up being required before any permits for a dwelling unit would come in.
Okay, so it's done all at once?
Yep, the whole, yep, the whole thing all at once with that, with that grading permit. Yep.
In advance, but we also give them, I think we had this discussion last time, we give them some timing with respect to seasonal planting.
Yes.
I'm looking at a no in the back of the room.
Let me see.
So we would force them to plant July 4th? July 12th?
Well, we couldn't grant the permit until...
Just being clear, right? We're requiring this
Yes.
Regardless of the time of year?
Yes.
Because they're going to have to be required to have irrigation, is the back...
Yeah, if they decide to do it, then.
Okay.
Correct.
Or they could delay their grading permit?
Yeah.
Got it.
This is sort of a comment, but, but I'm interested that the modification clause in here actually pertains to making the code more restrictive than less so. And I was interested that people seem to have perhaps used that as a request to modify in general.
You mean as in like the width or?
Well, the, the language which says compliance would not likely protect adjacent agricultural lands from nuisance claims or complaints. In other words, we could make the requirements more restrictive
More restrictive than what they are.
Rather than less restrictive. So in effect, we're not changing much from the public point of view other than there's no modification permitted at all.
Right, correct. And I think this helps make clear to developers that when they agree to the 30 feet, that's what it's going to be. And then there's no coming back and trying to reduce it later. So this would need a recommendation to the county commissioners would be the, the next step.
I'm still a little confused over the the timing of it. I don't think it was our intent to stop the, the grading permit. But I can understand when you're planning and it's not planning time. That seems to be a harmful burden to the developer, and I don't want to, I don't want to hurt them. I just want the job to get done, so... And you, you said that it would be taken into account, and then you said no.
Rob's right. Rob's right, though.
It's, it's confusing.
I think it might help to, so when there is a major subdivision, what is generally the first step of site work?
I've gone to Department of Planning and Zoning. So they have to get a sediment and grading permit. And when they get that permit, part of that earth movement, if you will, will be digging holes for trees. The problem is if you say, you know, within the next planting season or one year, you might as well not change the code, because that's what it says now, and we're not getting it planted.
Okay.
We tried to do timing to figure out the best way, and the only way we could assure the planting would get done... the planting would get done is to say you can't move any earth unless you also plant the trees at the same time.
Okay. Now, I understand.
And then the neighbors know it's getting planted. Every homeowner knows it's getting planted because it's there when they go to look at the lots. The inspectors know it's there. They're just going to have to bring in a water truck.
Okay.
I mean, it stinks. It's probably a little bit extra money, and nobody likes that. But in order to get the trees, we couldn't find another way to do it.
Okay. I was just a little confused because you guys had conflicting responses.
And we require watering regardless of time, right?
Yeah, once the trees are in, they're required to be alive.
Right.
And maintenance.
Sure. So I'm... Excuse me. I'm kind of at a loss why you can't get them planted within six months of any date if that's in the language. You know, if it's the middle of July and you say you have to, once you're, as a condition of developing this property, you must have the trees, begin planting all the trees, or have the thing completed within six months of the grading permit. I don't see how... How does that stop the county from enforcing the planning of screening or whatever?
Well, A, we can make it say whatever you guys are comfortable with. So I'll start there. But B, we sat and met with the zoning administrator, and it becomes an enforcement issue. Right now, it's very similar. And...
Is that not your job?
What's that?
Of course. Is that not your job?
That's somebody's job here.
Okay. I'm just, you know, I think you got a guy full-time that does that, right? I just feel like, Tom, I thought we had a pretty strong discussion about that, you know, that it was...
Talked about it, but I was... I had forgotten about the point that they're required to maintain the health of these trees. So they're watering regardless of what time of year they put them in.
You've got to water trees.
So it's just going to require a little more water if they put it in.
And that's any development, commercial.
And that's on their own... That's on the developer's own time clock, right? They can also defer for six months their construction start date if that's their decision, right?
It is. And once trees are on a plan, they're required to be there in perpetuity for however long that project exists, residential, commercial. So they got to water at some point anyway.
Was there any thought, and I think we discussed it some at the last meeting, but why it couldn't be at the issuance of the first building permit?
Then you're putting...
That is the first building permit.
Well, so for each...
You're talking about the first house.
Yes.
We didn't want to tie it to one homeowner. The zoning administrator thought it would be better from the very first permit moving forward.
Puts it on the developer as opposed to the single lot?
Stigma of that on that homeowner. But it is.
Solar allows it to be...
I'll just get requests for waivers for deferring the time of planting.
So I think that we're sort of dancing around the issue we're trying to fix. The issue we're trying to fix is that, not that enforcement is difficult, but that getting enforcement at the end of the process creates... That delay creates a different set of circumstances than the intent of the provision establishes. So if the buffer is not planted by the developer who's required to plant, then the developer has traditionally come in to say, "Well, people kind of like it the way it is." So the fact that this has become an issue and we have strayed from the intention of this highly debated and highly amended provision, the intention is to protect the adjacent ag use. So the intention is for that buffer to be planted by the developer as a part of that development approval. And the way to make that happen is that when the grading permit is issued, that's the time of implementation. I mean, that's just the cleanest way to enforce the intent of that code. We could go in and make the applicant at the last dwelling permit, we can enforce. The issue isn't difficulty in doing our job. We could do that. But what happens is the developer comes in and asks for a waiver, and that waiver has become complete removal of the requirement. So, you know, that's... So we've come full circle to where this whole conversation began, which is the developer doesn't want to implement this provision at the end of the process, even though that project was approved and that buffer is an important part of that approval. We just don't see these anymore because of, you know, the septic bill that was enacted so many years ago. We just don't see these cluster subdivisions anymore. So it's just not an issue that's fresh in our minds in terms of what that initial review looked like. I hope that clarifies.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any more questions? Can I get a recommendation, please?
Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Resolved that the Planning Commission makes a favorable recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners regarding Planning Commission-sponsored text amendment 25-08 to repeal the existing cluster buffer yard provisions and replace them in their entirety with edits that continue the intent of the cluster buffer yard. Specifically, the proposed provisions will require the buffer for major cluster subdivisions, will require installation of the buffer prior to the granting of any permit approval, will remove the ability to modify the standards, and will outline more specific landscaping standards. The Planning Commission provides the following findings. No, you got to help me with that.
So for the zoning and subdivision regulations, you can look at the existing intent of that provision. I think that's relative to, obviously relative to the zoning code that you're continuing that intent. Annotated code, that would be the last bullet point on that third page at the top.
Couldn't I just reference the staff report?
Yeah, so if you have read the staff report and agree with the recommendations and findings, you can make your recommendation based on the recommendations within the staff report.
That'd be much quicker and easier.
Having read the report and agreeing with the staff's findings and finding that it does agree with the comprehensive plan, the annotated code of Maryland, I recommend that we make a favorable recommendation to the county commissioners.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. I guess last, but not least, is my favorite recommendation.
A public comment?
Oh, public comment. Never changes.
Comment on what we just approved?
Okay, no public comment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor? Kathy, safe travels.